Administration, your order. We'll take up the following items for approval. Action item 1A is the approval of the minutes of the June 5th, 2023 meeting. I move the approval of action item 1A. Do I have a second? So seconded, any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none? It is adopted. Action item B, the policy calendar, 1B1. A resolution to approve the planned use of $50 million in non-recurring transformational funds. The university's leadership has developed a comprehensive plan detailing how the central office and colleges will utilize $50 million in non-recurring transformational funds from the 2024 New York State enacted budget. The university will provide biannual reports to the board of trustees to keep them updated on the project progress. Chancellor Felix Matos Rodriguez, Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Wendy Hensel, Deputy Chief Financial Officer Christine Chiapa are available to provide further background. Chancellor, do you want to go first?
I thought that we're going to present from, again, we, you have the plan before you, and what we did is we have some lessons learned from the non-recurring funds that we had last year too in the budget. And so we allocated a portion, as you can see there, that is going to go directly to the colleges. And the criteria for those funds would be funds that are consistent with the goals of the strategic roadmap to advance that. So that's going to be the key criteria in determining the selection of those funds. That's something that we get this approved. And then the other elements there in the plan are all in the different areas, academic affairs, in facilities, in finance, with the different projects that we have that we think are projects that, for the most part, will not require recurring funds. I mean, there might be some of them there that might be a pilot that would allow us to go to philanthropy and others to be able to seek the funding. But that's the criteria that we use for the funds. I'm happy to answer questions about specific things that board members might have that are in the plan.
When will we have specifics from the colleges? $20 million of the 50 is going directly to the colleges. When will we have?
Well, we didn't want to get ahead of ourselves in drafting the competition until we got the board approval to ahead. So once we get particularly, you know, the okay from this committee, we'll make a competition for different areas from the campuses. And it'd be a combination of enough specificity that we guarantee that the funds are being used in a transformational way, consistent with advancing the goals of the strategic roadmap, but also not making the campuses, you know, do a super detailed proposal, right, that delays the process and then the funds are not available until later in the spring. So that balance is something that we're trying to strike.
But we do want to make sure that these funds are being used for essentially capital expenses, not recurring expenses, not to fill holes in current.
No, absolutely. I mean, not capital, but I mean, they're not recurring, yes. And, you know, and identifying some of those things is not always easy, right? Because some good things, when you identify them, you want them to be able to continue. But those clearly has to be criteria because, I mean, we have no guarantee that these funds are going to be, or even portions of these funds will be provided again. I mean, it happened last year, which was unprecedented, right? That a sizable non-recurring appropriation by the state became recurrent. But I don't think that we can responsibly assume that again, to your point.
And last year, based on last year's budget, we authorized $40 million. Has that been spent? Is it being spent? What's the status? When will we get a report on that?
Yeah, so the state allows us to spend the funds over two-year period, fiscal '23, fiscal '24, so they have to be spent by the June 30th. We will give an updated presentation. At June, we came to the board and gave a presentation and information item of where we are spending as of the end of fiscal year. We'll bring another presentation, the plan is, at the next meeting. But money was spent. A lot of the projects and procurements that happened in June actually helped us get some of that money moving quicker, like some of the things that Brene was doing. And we've also allocated a lot of money out to the colleges also. So we'll give you an update at the next board meeting about where those, that spending has been.
Yeah, I just want to be, all of the $40 million is allocated. The question of whether it's been spent, in part because of the procurement and the delays. Remember, these don't get approved until both you approve it and the state approves it. So there's a lag in terms of moving forward with some of these things. I did want to mention.
When's the state supposed to approve it?
After.
After the board votes, we can take it to the state.
Just to mention the $20 million to the campuses, we are incredibly fortunate that we can have some stimulus to create programs and reaction to the strategic plan. It would be very unusual to implement a system-wide strategic plan that didn't provide some type of funding to the campuses in order to come to the table, in order to meet it. And the PMP metrics are very detailed. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Just go ahead.
My only point is, it's actually quite detailed in terms of what the expectation would be and how they can contribute to us meeting the metrics that the system has to deliver in the plan. So it should all be tied to that.
One quick question. If the board's approving it and then the state, why that order?
Because they changed the, that's what I was going to say. The state has changed it. They want the board to take action before we take it to them.
This is the same way it worked last year, but we've already shared it with them, so they've seen it. So they already know what it is in there.
Yeah.
And we've already flushed out any concerns, but they're not going to officially approve it until our board approves it.
Until the board.
That was the message that we received. And that was the same way it worked last year as well.
Mr. Hannon?
So one thing I have to say about the $20 million allocation to the campuses is when it comes to approving something that we don't necessarily know where it's going to go to in terms of CUNY's operations, how can we ensure that what we vote on is actually something that would be the will of the committee and the board if we don't know what exactly it's going towards when we're requesting the allocation?
You would know that the committee is voting to provide $20 million in a competition to the campus for programs that are tied to the strategic roadmap that the board has also seen and approved.
That still seems like a blanket allocation to be determined at a later date.
I see it differently. I mean, that is, the board is saying, this is a competition with these parameters that would authorize it based on the criteria of the strategic plan to be able to move ahead. Those competitions are done like that in many other systems and campuses too. And it's a portion of the allocation. And obviously, we'll report back to the board on the projects that get selected in the process too.
And keep in mind, Jonathan, that is very likely to come through my office and the Office of Academic Affairs, as well as through the operations side. The strategic plan is a statement of the campus-wide system goals. And those goals can't be met with individual schools or just the system. It has to be a collaboration of the two. And so if we don't allocate money for them to be able to identify how they will contribute in these spaces, we are very limited in our ability to actually meet the targets that we've set. So it is truly a controlled process for a script that has been decided by the board and system-wide. So it isn't, and there's five areas of the strategic plan, you'll remember? We would expect that these would have to then connect into one of those five areas.
Do the individual proposals from the colleges, from the schools, have to be approved by the state? Or will the state just approve the $20 million allocation to college?
I mean, we would have to have a discussion with them, but this is a similar approach to what SUNY had proposed, right? They actually, our plan is actually more detailed than the plan that the state has approved for SUNY. SUNY also did a good chunk of their funds in broad buckets that would be allocated to the colleges.
And we allocated money from the 40, too, that were done, I mean, not that amount, but we did it that way, too, and there was no issue from the state, to your point.
Yeah, I think they're interested, some of the questions that we have are probably similar to yours, like what is going to be our process to determine who gets what and that kind of stuff? So they have some of those similar questions also, but there doesn't appear to be any real concerns with what we're proposing.
I would expect that we'll get updates on the allocations to colleges as they're made.
Absolutely.
Professor, present.
If you may add, my question, it was, be a little more specific about the process to determine the allocation of the $20 million, because I'm sure the campus has been put in 50 million or more in requests.
We have not created that process, but we've done this for a number of different, you know, we often have money in specific areas that we say give some discretion to the campuses to honor the distinctive individualness of the approaches on the campuses. They submit proposals, that amount, I mean, first, we'll identify what the distribution of that is. I mean, the intent is not to favor some campuses over another. It is to figure out what a reasonable distribution mechanism would be. And from that point, tell them, this is what you have. Do some type of report back. But to the extent that the committee is concerned about discretion in that regard coming through the Office of Academic Affairs, I'm happy to share that process before it goes live to get your input in terms of what that looks like, if that's a concern. But we are very experienced in doing this, is my point. We do this all the time.
So my understanding then is that the $20 million will focus just on the academic affairs side of the strategic roadmap? Is that a reasonable?
No, it will be focused on the goals of the strategic roadmap. We assume that a large part of that will be academic affairs, but not all.
We may, I'm assuming we will be managing that process. That was my only assumption, in connection with our operations colleagues. Yeah.
Professor De Souza.
Thank you. Because you mentioned earlier that maybe the board is thinking that some of the $20 million will go towards capital expenses. So I think that's one thing that I'm just kind of curious about, to what, well, capital versus, oh, no, no.
It's our capital.
I got one shot.
Oh, yeah, one shot.
Non-recurring.
Initially, I thought it said, okay, got it. And then I think I would just be interested in the transparency around, not just the process, but that at the end, when the allocation goes through, that there's transparency there as well.
Yeah, we have to report to the, both to the board and to the state, and so those are public documents. But again, the, maybe it's helpful for you to understand, too, how we came to these proposals. This was a process of identifying across the board, across the different areas, what are the transformative ideas for one-time funding that can move the needle, right? Understanding it can't be in personnel and those kind of things. And so the prioritization of the chancellor, of me, of everyone who looked at it, was what is the biggest impact for a single expenditure infusion to really move the needle? So that's what the list reflects.
Right. Sorry, I just misspoke. So transparency, not in that sense, but I guess maybe I meant to share some of these things actively with faculty and with others across campuses.
Sure.
Because everything is available through, online, but not all faculty members go there to read about what these allocations have been. And just an example that came up in a meeting recently where I met Baruch, sorry, something I don't remember. I met Baruch, and the 17 Lex part of that restructuring was done by a minority-owned business, for example. First time I've heard about it, right? Just as a faculty member at Baruch. And some of these things, I think, are good for faculty just to have a better sense of what decisions are being made. So I didn't mean transparency with the board or the state. I mean with our own people, you know? That some of that, sometimes when it comes out and in some of the communication, it's important.
We'll be happy, I mean, we've done it with some of the, again, with the 40, some of them, it hasn't been, it wasn't as sizable a pot, but with smaller pot, we have, you know, we have announced what projects have been selected, and we'll be happy to do the same thing in different formats so that different people can get it. Happy to do that.
And that was not part of the 40 million, just to be clear, the project that you're talking about. I think in general.
Oh, no, not that. No, no, it was a separate thing. I'm just saying generally communicating with faculty so that they have a, you know, because a lot of things are on the internet, but we don't, people don't always go there, and I think it could be useful for morale sometimes.
Well, I'm going to move the approval of policy item 1B1. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there any further discussion, any further questions? Thank you. I think this has been helpful. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none? It is adopted.
Thank you.
Moving right along. Policy item 1B2, a resolution to authorize a time-limited waiver of application fees for senior grad, seniors graduating from New York City and New York State high schools. The Board of Trustees approved the pilot program in May 2023, which waived application fees for New York City public school seniors who applied to the university between March 15, 2023 and April 30, 2023. The university aims to continue this effort by waiving application fees for all New York City public schools, school graduating seniors during CUNY month, promoting application and enrollment for the 2024 application season. The university will also extend this benefit to graduating seniors from all New York State high schools. Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Wendy Hensel, Vice Chancellor for Enrollment Management, Reyna Sarmiento, and Associate University Provost for Planning, Robert Maruca, are available to provide further background on this item or to answer any questions as needed. And there was just a big bit on New York One, featuring our chancellor about this program. So I'm going to move the approval of policy item 1B2. Do I have a second?
I have a question.
Is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
Discussion.
I'm sorry. Is this going to be available to the parochial schools as well? It's not in the proposal, but is it going to be available to the parochial schools as well?
It is October 16 to October 31. So the one month is only for the New York City public schools. Everybody else in the state of New York is October 16 to October 31.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to do a further presentation on this? Sev Ferri here. You want to talk about what happened today, Chancellor?
Well, I mean, this is, thank you for the opportunity. I mean, first, thanks to the board, because we did, on a limited basis, something similar at the end of the calendar year last year. It was late. I think it was, it helped us to get some students where we did that. But to be candid, it was probably not the best timing for us to see whether this is something that we want to continue doing or not on a regular basis. The opportunity came to do this again in October, and now we did it, A, with a campaign that you're all watching in the monitors around you. We didn't, I mean, we had some publicity for that campaign last spring, but not at the scale that we have, that we have now. It's also joined by a letter that today every senior in the New York City public schools receive, signed by Chancellor Banks and myself, telling those students that they have us place at CUNY, right? And having a bar code that allows them to immediately go to our application site and begin their application process, and encourage them to do so within CUNY month because it's to their advantage, given the waiver. I was chatting with Chancellor Banks that we need to do things like this every week to get our good mojo feelings, because the response, we did it with students from one of our early colleges, the College of the Arts, which is with City College and the Department of Education. And the response from the students was just phenomenal in terms of, oh my God, how excited they were, and they're going to take advantage of it. They felt special, they felt included. We told them that the campaign was a campaign that was based on feedback from our students, that all the talent that you see there are CUNY students, which are just like them. I mean, it was an incredible opportunity. And some of the additional features, I mean, we're talking about the waiver, but sorry, that we had anticipated, students were asking about, so how do I know which programs the schools have? So part of the campaign, when you go and you click in there, it gives you a menu of about maybe 20-something clusters of majors in your business, and it will give you all the CUNY schools that have associate, baccalaureate, and graduate degrees. It gives you a sense of what kinds of jobs you might be able to get. I mean, it was really great to see that many of the questions they had for Chancellor Banks and I have been anticipated in the campaign and the information on the website. So, I mean, again, I'm coming from a high of having been spending time with those students, and it is a personalized letter. So it's not a, dear student, it is a, dear Felix Matos Rodriguez. Boom.
Mr. Hannon?
So before the question, it's still a boilerplate letter if every student in the city or state is receiving it, but my question here is about the timeline regarding the application process. So we see that for students in non-New York City public schools, they get the application from the 16th to the 31st of October, whereas the students in the public schools get to have that application if they're graduating in 2024. But one thing about it is that that means that students who have applied for the spring 2024 admission cycle would not have had the same opportunity for a fee waiver for the CUNY application. And in the future, would there be any sort of priority towards giving this to spring applicants as opposed to just fall applicants? As well as expanding the timeline as to when this waiver is available for students who are not in the public school system but in New York City schools? To be able to ensure that all New York City students are able to get the same benefits out of this fee waiver as the students who are currently benefiting from it?
So let me take that in pieces. One of the things that we talked about as a board last time was, what did we learn from what we did in the spring, right? And I think the consensus was that it was going in the right direction, but we didn't time it probably in the best possible way, and we didn't connect it to the kind of campaign and other features that we have now. I think that after we go through this campaign, we're going to be able to come back to this board and say, here are the results. Here's a spike. It was really worth it for us to do this. Or maybe it was not. Or the experiment that we did with the, outside of New York City schools and the parochial was really, really great. We should expand that. We don't have that information now, and I think that as a result of what we learned in this process, that is a conversation that we're going to have to be coming back to this board in terms of whether this is something that we want to do on a regular basis or not. But I wouldn't want to, we don't have, I think, the information to provide you with a sense of that until we go through this. And this is why also we did it somewhat contained, to be able to see what we learned. I don't know if Renee or.
Yeah, just a couple things, Jonathan. This is a much more equitable way to do it in October. Last time, we did it after so many folks had applied and weren't aware that there would be this fee waiver, so it was important to us to get in front of that so it was equally available to students who wanted to apply in October. Also, we need to remember that a large number of our students already get a fee waiver through the New York, what percentage is it?
Over 70%.
Over 70% of our students apply for free at any point in time when they apply, based on their income status. So this was our attempt to get out of our own way and get out of the students' way so they didn't have to wait for that process to play back and forth administratively. They could apply, they would get their information, we would move forward. Also, candidly, it's expensive. It's expensive to waive fees for private school students. And I do want to give a shout out to Trustee Vivalo. Your advocacy for the parochial schools and the private school students was part of why we were really thinking in this space and making sure we were being equitable across the board for all of New York City and New York State students. So I'm really excited. This is a step, but it's also a step based on an economic analysis of what can we afford to do without harming the resources that are available for our enrolled students? Because there has to be a trade-off in those two things. So it's actually very well researched, very well thought out, and it's still a pilot. So we will take, as he said, we'll take those lessons, and then there may be the ability to expand based on how well that is to bring in new access students for us.
I think the other thing that I'd like to be able to add is that by asking students to apply in October gives the colleges an opportunity to get their students, to acclimate them, to onboard them through the summer. And the two things in the resolution that it seeks to solve was to increase the number of applications, but more importantly, to reduce the burden. In the spring, there is no burden for those students with a voucher. If they have financial need, they apply, they get the, they get the fee waiver. So it's less of an important, because they'll still get it anyway if they apply in the spring.
Thank you all. The motion having been made and seconded, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is adopted.
Can I say one more thing? I just want to be able to thank Sev Fermoso and the whole CIS team for delivering this. They went into production on Friday to test this, and it opened on Sunday, October 1st. So I want to be able to shout out to Sev, his team, because without them, this would have never launched. Thank you. And also Bob Maruca and Sharon Hardy in the audience.
Thank you. Policy item 1B3, a resolution to approve a new pricing structure for global graduate degree programs for students attending Baruch College under its global partnership agreements. In February 2018, the Board of Trustees approved tuition and fee pricing for the 11 global programs delivered through partnerships with institutions worldwide. Baruch College intends to revitalize, continue, and expand on these global programs as they foster additional partnerships for the benefit of Baruch College, CUNY, and their partner institutions. As part of the expansion, the college has evaluated the pricing structure of these global programs and has aligned the new proposed pricing close to the established tuition and fee pricing practice at the universities while remaining competitive in the market. Baruch College President David Wu and his team are available, and I'll ask them to come up, because I'm sure there will be questions, and we'd like to hear a presentation on that. While they're coming up, I move the approval of policy item 1B3. Is there a second? President Wu, if you'll introduce your team and then talk about the program.
Yes. With me, here are my esteemed colleagues, our Provost Linda Asic and our new Dean of the School of Business, Bruce Weber.
Please tell us about the program.
Yes. So I just want to very quickly introduce our Baruch College Global Graduate Program. And we have some form of these programs in existence for quite a few years, and these are global dual-degree programs. And typically, the student at a partner institution would spend, after they completed their master's degree at a home institution, spend one year with us here in New York City to get a second master's degree. And we have, according to the 2018 resolution, 11 of these programs are already being approved. And now we have seen the demand of these programs start to increase, and we have the desire to expand this, not only to more countries, but also the previous program are primarily focusing on MS finance program in the business school, and would like to expand this program format to all of our graduate programs in this format. And so the, there are a couple elements of this, and we are, since the global program market is very competitive, and so it's important that we price it in a way that's competitive to especially some of the public institutions that we compete with. And after some analysis, we have come up with a pricing, and that would allow us to be basically competitive at $800 per credit or less. And we're also following the same, as far as the out-of-state student, we're following the same logic as the CUNY online tuition charge of 1.2 times the in-state tuition to charge these students. And that allows us to be competitive at the same time, making a differentiation between in-state and out-of-state students. And one of the more innovative aspects of this, since we have partner institutions, and the student would enter as a cohort coming from that partner institution, so we're not recruiting these students one by one, but they're coming in as a cohort. And so that, of course, allows us to sort of benefit from some economies of scale this way. And also, very importantly, this allows not only Baruch but also CUNY to expand our reputation or footprint, because we do carry a CUNY flag when we're out there in these different countries. And once the reputation is established and, of course, beyond these programs, we're able to recruit students out of international. and, of course, beyond these programs, we're able to recruit students, other international students as well, and into our other graduate programs. So these are some of the rationales, and I'll be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Any questions for President Wu or members of his team? Great expansion of an existing program. Hearing none. The motion having been made and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution is adopted. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Item 1B4 is a resolution to authorize a contract for Dropbox. The university's current contract with Dropbox Inc. expires on December 31st, 2023, I'm sorry, December 20th, 2023. The university issued an invitation for bids on September 13th, 2023, requesting bid submission from Dropbox Inc. and all authorized Dropbox resellers for Dropbox. The response to the bids are due on October 4th, 2023. The university is seeking approval to enter into a contract with the lowest selected bidder for a not-to-exceed amount of $1.6 million over a five-year period. Vice Chancellor for Information Technology and University Chief Information Officer and busy, busy person, Sev Formoso, is available to provide further background on this item or to answer any questions as needed. First, I'll move the approval of policy item 1B4. Is there a second? Okay, we can proceed. Sev, do you have anything to ask, answer to this, add to this?
No, no, there's no questions. I don't do it.
Are there any questions about this?
This Dropbox. What questions could we have?
Put it in the Dropbox. The motion having, yes.
Is this an extension of the previous contract that applies to all students and all staff?
Yes, John, it is. We're maintaining our current relationship.
It costs us like a dollar per user per year? It just seemed like a great deal.
So we are in the throes of trying to maintain the current or slightly better pricing, but that's not yet finalized.
We'll hear more about that kind of statement as we go along. Trying to get better pricing. Right. Motion having been made and seconded, there being no further discussion, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is approved. Policy item 1B5 is a resolution to authorize a contract for ServiceNow licenses. In December 2018, the university selected ServiceNow as its cloud-based information technology service management tool to automate IT processes across the enterprise. The university is seeking approval to enter a new contract with Carisoft for ServiceNow licenses for a period of three years, ending on December 21, 2026, with a total not to exceed $1,842,244, subject to the ongoing availability of GSA Schedule Number 47QSWA18D008F. You'll be tested on that. Vice Chancellor for Information Technology Service and University Chief Information Officer, Information Officer Formoso is available to provide further background or answer any questions. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none. The motion having been made and seconded, proceed to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is adopted. Policy 1B6 is a resolution to authorize a contract extension for maintenance support services for licensed Oracle software products. The university office of computing and information services, with support from the university procurement office and office of the Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and General Counsel, engaged in discussions with Oracle to extend two purchase orders with Oracle America, Inc., for maintenance of support services for the Oracle database management system and the Oracle identity management suites, both of which are required to operate the CUNY first system. The cost reductions negotiated by the university are contingent on the university's renewal of each purchase order under the terms and conditions of the OTS contract for three years, which exceeds the term originally authorized by the Board of Trustees on September 22, 2021. The anticipated renewal of both purchase orders will not exceed $1,518,488 over a term of three years and one month. This renewal agreement will yield annual savings of $825,865 and 52 cents to the operating expense budget, representing a 62% annual cost reduction. Vice Chancellor Formoso, who we've introduced already, is available to provide further background and answer any questions. I will move the approval of policy item 1B6. Is there a second? Are there any questions? Is there any further discussion needed on this? Hearing none. The motion having been made and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is adopted. Policy 1B7 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Dreamland Security Services, Inc., to provide unarmed security and fire guard services to the City College of New York. The City College of New York requires unarmed security and fire guard services on an as-needed periodic or an emergency basis for its buildings across its campus. The colleges issued a competitive bid to procure the required services, and Dreamland Security Services offered the lowest bid in response to solicitation. The college is seeking authorization to enter into a contract not to exceed $2,764,188 for a period of two years, with an additional amount not to exceed $1,382,094 for an additional one-year option for a total aggregate expenditure not to exceed $4,146,282. The City College of New York's chief operating officer, Scott Gerber, is available to provide further background or to answer any questions as needed. I will move the approval of policy item 1B7. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion or any questions? Seeing none. Let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is adopted. Policy item 1B8 is a resolution to extend transportation service, services contract for a period of one additional year at the College of Staten Island. The College of Staten Island entered into a contract dated October 16th, 2017, with First Transit, Inc., to provide bus transportation services to transport the college students, staff, and faculty between the Staten Island Ferry Terminal and the campus and to and from sporting events for a five-year term. On December 12th, 2022, the Board of Trustees authorized the extension of the existing contract for a period of one year using unexpended funds designated for the original contract to allow the college to conduct the necessary market exploration and optimization of the requirements for a future solicitation. The college has assessed the demand for the services as well as changes in the transportation industry related to the pandemic, and has since received instructions from the New York State Office of the State Controller to conduct an invitation for bids. As a result, the college now seeks to extend the existing contract for a period of up to one additional year for an amount not to exceed $1,69,179 to allow the college to conduct this solicitation and enter a new five-year agreement. College of Staten Island President Timothy Lynch, Assistant Vice President for Finance and Budget and Chief Financial Officer Carla Serrano are available to provide further background. I will note that we passed this back in 2022. There was an effort made to get MTA to work on this, and that did not work out. So there was a delay. So now we need the additional year in order to actually complete the process. Are there any, did I move this?
No.
I did not. I moved the approval of policy item 1B8. Is there a second? Any questions or discussion on this? Yes, Mr. Hannity.
Have the concerns that we had last year when we tabled this item in committee been addressed?
What was those concerns? You'll have to...
We had concerns about that the plan wasn't necessarily thought out enough in terms of being able to extend the contract. So have those concerns from last time been addressed?
I'm not sure what those concerns were at that time. Does anybody recall? I don't recall any concerns. I mean, the only concern...
It was the MTA issue. Sorry, after...
Yeah, it was the MTA issue that...
Yeah, the only concern is the chair, the chair address.
Just addressed.
Okay, thank you.
And yes, and we tried, and it fell through. And so now we're back to where we started.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? We'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is adopted. Policy item 1B9 is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee. The October 20, 2023 Personnel Matters Report is generated from employee data entered into the university's system of record between May 9th, 2023, and September 4th, 2023, and does not include regular appointments that have been submitted as individual resolutions. The report contains a total of 49 ECP actions, spanning four months of staffing activity in advance of the start of the academic year, including 16 interim appointments, 13 regular appointments, three salary increases, and 15 resignations and two terminations. Increases are typically approved to address retention, widening of scope, reclassification, or promotion. Senior Vice Chancellor for University Human Resources and Labor Relations, Dori Anne Gloria, is available to provide further background or to answer any questions. I'll move the approval of policy item 1B9. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or any discussion? Vice Chancellor Gloria. Yes, Mr. Hannity.
In this Personnel Matters Report, we see details of search waivers. We see details of failed searches extending interim appointments. And in all of those cases, it seems like there are oftentimes administrative, how do I say this, administration using the rules in a way that there is not a genuine search for a candidate to actually take a position, but rather just appointing the desired candidate without an actual search happening. And so it just seems like this is something that keeps happening more and more throughout the university, and something that needs to be addressed in order to make sure that we have the best candidates coming for our positions rather than just internal appointees continuing on in their positions year after year.
Was there an unusual number of interim appointments this time around? I mean, it's that time of year when this happens. But Vice Chancellor Gloria?
Yeah, this covers four months when the board was not meeting. And so interim appointments during that period would not be atypical. I do not think the number of interim appointments in general is going up across the university. In fact, last year at this time, we had 130 actions, and this time, we have only 49. So in general, activity is down across the board. It is true that sometimes people are appointed interim, and there isn't a search starting, particularly, as I said, when we are waiting for the opportunity to present resolutions. But we are more routinely now checking with departments when they appoint someone, or colleges when they appoint someone on an interim, to confirm the reason for the interim appointment. So I actually think the interim status is being used appropriately. Thank you.
Have search waivers become more frequent across the university?
I would say not. I think overall, across the board, activity is on the down.
Anything further? Seeing none. The motion having been made and seconded. Proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is adopted. Policy item 1B10 is a resolution to appoint Robert Koslik Jr. as Associate Vice Chancellor of Design, Construction, and Management at the City University of New York. Robert Koslik Jr. was previously the Director of Projects for the New York Public Library Department of Capital Planning and Construction. The chancellor recommends that the Board of Trustees appoint Robert Koslik as Associate Vice Chancellor of Design, Construction, and Management at the City University of New York, effective October 24, 2023, with compensation of $230,000 per annum, subject to financial ability. Vice Chancellor for Facilities Plan and Construction and Management, Mohamed Atallah, is available to provide further background or to answer any questions. I'll move the approval of policy item 1B10. Is there a second? Seeing a second. Are there any questions? His CV was in the materials. Any questions? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor, please indicate. Those opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is adopted. Policy item 1B11 is a resolution to appoint Alana Gallego, I hope I pronounced your name properly, as Vice President for Operations and Administration at Baruch College. Alana Gallego has over 20 years of experience overseeing operations that reach across administration, human resources, legal affairs, public affairs, communications, asset management, budget, accountancy, strategic planning, and capital projects. The president of Baruch College recommends that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York appoint Alena Gallego as Vice President of Operations and Administration at Baruch College, effective October 24, 2023, with compensation of $230,000 per annum, subject to financial ability. Baruch President David Wu is available to provide further background and answer any questions. I move the approval of item, policy item 1B11. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is adopted. Policy item 1B12 is a resolution to appoint Gisette Forte as Vice President of Finance and Administration at Queensborough Community College. Dr. Forte is currently Assistant Vice President of Budget at Finance at Brooklyn College. The president of Queensborough Community College recommends that the Board of Trustees appoint Gisette Forte as Vice President for Finance Administration at Queensborough Community College, effective October 24, 2023, with compensation of $192,000 per annum, subject to financial ability. Queensborough Community College President Christine Mangino is available to provide further background or to answer any questions. I move the approval of policy item 1B12. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any questions or any discussion? Seeing none. We'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is adopted. Policy item 1B13 is a resolution to appoint Thomas A. Issekenegbi as university professor. Thomas Issekenegbi was appointed president of Bronx Community College by the Board of Trustees on June 29, 2015, and served for eight years until August 18, 2023. The chancellor recommends, in accordance with the City University of New York Manual of General Policies 5.23, and in recognition of Dr. Thomas A. Issekenegbi's distinguished service and legacy to the City University of New York, that the Board of Trustees appoint Dr. Issekenegbi as university professor at Lehman College, effective January 24, 2024, at an annual salary of $170,452, subject to financial ability. Chancellor Felix Matasuriguis is available to provide further background or answer any questions. I move the approval of policy item 1B13. Is there a second? I see a second. Any questions or any discussion?
Just as a matter of policy, given that this is the first time that we have an appointment of a university professor from a president since the splitting of the faculty staff and administration committee, is there a particular reason this goes through the Committee on Finance and Administration, given that it's an instructional staff title that has responsibilities of classroom instruction?
We're spending money.
It's a financial decision.
It's a financial decision.
It could go both.
Just a policy question, since this... Just a policy question, since this is a first.
I mean, I guess we could ask him to send it to Ed Powell also. We could do joint, but.
We don't need to delay it. Ed Powell's.
I have enough on my plate. All right. Any further questions or discussion? Proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. All opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is adopted. Policy Item 1B14 is a resolution to authorize a procurement of bar exam preparation courses, a contract and related expenditure, and a waiver of cost of such programs for third-year law school students enrolled at the CUNY School of Law. The CUNY School of Law is proposing to provide a free bar preparation course to their law students to assist them in passing the bar exam. Accordingly, the School of Law is seeking the Board of Trustees' authorization to issue a request for proposal for provision of bar exam preparation services for an amount not to exceed $750,000 for the period of February 24 through May 2026, and approval to offer the bar preparation course without cost to the students. The dean of the CUNY Law School, Sudha Sethi, is available to provide further background or answer any questions. I move the approval of Policy Item 1B14. Is there a second? There's a second. Any questions or discussion? Having suffered through that myself, it's very important for the law students to have this kind of preparation, and that becomes important for the CUNY Law Schools to maintain their pass rate on the bar exam. I think this is a terrific program, so. Anyway, having any further discussion, hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is adopted. I'm going to look at Items 1B15, 1B16, 1B17, and.
Through 20, if you want to do.
I want to do all the Academic Affairs offices together.
So I have to do 15, 16, 17, and 18.
I'll read them. We'll then ask the provost to be available to answer any questions, and then we'll proceed to a vote on the four together, if we may. Item 1B15 is a resolution to appoint Melissa Kirk as Senior University Dean for Enrollment Management at the City University of New York. Melissa Kirk was most recently Associate Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs for Antioch University. The chancellor recommends that the Board of Trustees appoint Melissa Kirk as Senior University Dean for Enrollment Management at the City University of New York, effective August 7, 2023, with compensation of $195,000 per annum, subject to financial ability. Item 1B16 is a resolution to appoint Althea Ford as Interim University Dean of Special Programs at the City University of New York. Althea Ford was previously the Senior Director of Academic Program Services at Lehman College in the Division of Enrollment Management. The chancellor recommends that the Board of Trustees appoint Althea Ford as the Interim University Dean of Special Programs at the City University of New York, effective August 1, 2023, with a compensation of $175,000 per annum, subject to financial ability. Item 1B17 is a resolution to appoint Kara Heffernan as Interim University Dean of Student Success Initiatives at the City University of New York. Kara Heffernan was previously the University Assistant Dean and Chief of Staff to the Associate Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs at CUNY. The chancellor recommends that the Board of Trustees appoint Kara Heffernan as Interim University Dean of Student Success and Initiatives at the City University of New York, effective February 27, 2023, with a compensation of $175,000 per annum, subject to financial ability. And Policy Item 1B18 is a resolution to appoint Anna Lopes, Interim Senior University Dean of Graduate and University Programming at the City University of New York. Anna Lopes was most recently Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs at Brooklyn College. The chancellor recommends the Board of Trustees appoint Anna Lopes as Interim Senior University Dean of Graduate and Undergraduate Programming at the City University of New York, effective August 14, 2023, with a compensation of $205,000 per annum, subject to financial ability. Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Wendy Hensel is available to provide further background and answer any questions. I will move the approval of these four items. Is there a second? There is. Provost Hensel, what are you doing in your office?
Well, I'm going to anticipate a question about why are these interim appointments, and explain to you a few things. We have been engaged in a reorganization of my entire office staff, and so three of these positions, the three that are interim, all report up to a position that has been restructured that is currently under a search. And so typically, you would not appoint direct reports to that person until that placement was filled with a permanent position. So we will undertake those searches as soon as that happens, and these are absolutely outstanding folks in all of these positions. So I strongly recommend their appointment.
Thank you. Any questions for the provost? Hearing none. We will proceed to a vote on all four items. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The four items are adopted. Policy Item 1B19 is a resolution to appoint Michael, is it Rikichi or Rakiki? What?
Rakiki.
Rakiki. As Interim Vice President of Information Services and Chief Information Officer at Baruch College. Michael Rakiki is currently Assistant Vice President of Information Technology and Deputy Chief Information Officer at Baruch College. The president of Baruch College recommends that the Board of Trustees appoint Michael Rakiki as Interim Vice President of Information Services and Chief Information Officer at Baruch College, effective January 1, 2023, with compensation of $197,298 per annum, subject to financial ability. Baruch President David Wu is available to provide further background and answer any questions. I move the approval of Policy Item 1B19. Is there a second? There is. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Hannan?
He's been through enough this past week with the compromise of the internet system there.
He's there, and he's still there, so.
Yep.
Anything further? All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Policy Item 1B20 is a resolution to appoint Claudia Garcia Lindau as Interim Vice President for Administration and Finance at York College. Claudia Garcia Lindau is currently the Assistant Vice President of Information Technology and Chief Information Officer at York College. The president of York College recommends that the Board of Trustees appoint Claudia Garcia Lindau as Interim Vice President for Administration and Finance at York College, effective July 6, 2023, with compensation of $215,000 per annum, subject to financial ability. York College Vice President for Enrollment Management and Student Affairs, Karen Williams, is available to provide further background or answer any questions. I will move the adoption of Policy Item 1B20. Is there a second? There is. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is adopted. With no more items on the policy calendar, I will address Section 2 information items. There are two information items on the agenda. Information Item 2A is a budget update fiscal year 2023, preliminary year-end financial summary. University Executive Budget Director Catherine Avata will make a presentation on this item.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. So our fiscal year 2023 just wrapped up, and so we wanted to bring to you a preliminary report on what the numbers look like. So we'll just talk about the year-end condition, go over some of the data, the enrollment and tuition revenue, expenses and staffing. And then we also wanted to give you an update on the fiscal '24 city adopted budget. When the committee met in June and we presented the initial allocation, we were working off of the executive budget. Since that time, the city adopted a budget, and we just wanted to give you an update on that. So the university is ending fiscal '23 with a balance of $143 million. That's up from the Q3 condition of $122 million. All of the colleges except for three are ending with a positive balance. The three that aren't, York College, the College of Staten Island, and Kingsborough Community College. So when the final report comes out, you will see that those colleges have negative balances. The structural deficit overall is $101 million. That is down from the Q3 number, so heading in the right direction. And then, you know, something that we have talked about, you know, first of all, the conditions that some of the colleges have improved, and unfortunately, it's worsened at some. And, you know, what we've talked a lot about and pointed out is there are variations among all of the colleges, and we do continue to see that. So just an overall presentation of what the numbers look like, total resources, expenditures. So that blue cable on the left is the resources, broken down into the campus-specific allocations, allocations outside of the operating budget, which is fringes, building rentals, energy. Those get paid centrally on behalf of the colleges. Prior year reserves that were carried forward of $107 million. And then the actual revenue compared to target is down. So colleges under-collected tuition revenue by $94 million. Overall, total resources of that $3.9 billion. And then on the right-hand side, in yellow, are the expenses. So those first two items, the personal service expenditure, the fringes, those two numbers total eighty-five percent of the expenditure. And then you can see the rest of the breakdown, the OTPS, energy, building rentals, and then some program financial aid, and there's that $143 million ending balance. So taking a look at enrollment and tuition revenue, so year-over-year, the FTE enrollment was down, not down by as much as it had been the two prior years, but still down by five percent. And you can see the percentages across the groups of colleges, five percent at seniors and communities, and one percent at the graduate and professional schools. Year-over-year tuition revenue was also down. It's lower by $43 million, which is about three percent from last year's level. And you can also see the details of what that looks like by the groupings of colleges. The largest decrease is that $37 million at the senior colleges, which is down four percent. Community colleges, only down five million, or two percent, rather. And then same percentage at the graduate schools, but those are smaller schools, so the numbers are much smaller. And I think the significant thing to point out is the two-year change. Tuition revenue is down by $179 million over the last two years. And as I just mentioned, we are seeing variations across all of the colleges, and we just wanted to present a picture of what that looks like. So I'll just, you know, very briefly mention that at the senior colleges, you can see that there was a one percent increase and also a decrease of eleven percent in terms of tuition revenue. Community colleges, the variations are a bit greater, of seven percent to a twenty-one percent down. And I will just mention about that twenty-one percent, it's a large percentage. There was a one-time transactional activity that is causing that. That gets corrected in fiscal '24. So that, I just want to point out that that twenty-one percent is not as dramatic as it seems. And then at the graduate and professional schools, again, smaller numbers, so the percentages look larger. So down nine, excuse me, nine percent to an increase of thirty-two percent. And we've, you know, presented this graph before. It shows the change since 2019. And the revenue is down $185 million since 2019. But as I just mentioned, most of that happened in the last two years. And the largest percentage decrease is at the community colleges, which have seen the largest enrollment decreases. So community college tuition revenue is down thirty-six percent since 2019. Senior colleges are down six and a half percent. And then you can see the graduate schools is just that small section at the top of the bars, and that tuition revenue is up by twenty-three percent. Turning to expenses, our expenses are up three percent, which is $80 million. Same percentage increase for personal service costs. And I'll just point out that, you know, that's, it's related to salary increments, collective bargaining increments. Full-time staff overall is up by fifty-nine positions. However, we have had the faculty hiring initiative. And so when you look at the breakdown between the faculty positions and the non-teaching positions, we are up only by fifty-nine because there's an offset from a decrease in non-teaching positions. And then OTPS expenses are up by about eight percent, and those increases are related to pandemic-related costs. So some colleges are still, had been spending on pandemic-related items. Some colleges had stimulus funds and were able to do, make some investments, especially on the IT side. And then, of course, there's also inflation that's driving those costs up. And also for expenses, just taking a look at the variations among the colleges, just, you know, briefly say what some of these expenses are. At the senior colleges, you can see there's a range from an increase of nine percent to a decrease of one percent. So there are some decreases. Community colleges, up between one and four percent. Graduate professional schools, about a half a percent to a sixteen percent increase. And then at the system office, there was a decrease of five percent, and that was related to some one-time shared services expenses. I can take your question.
So a question regarding what was just said about the expenses for personnel. The collective bargaining is coming up, and currently, the faculty are not under a contract due to collective bargaining negotiations. Do we have any updates on that? And do we have any estimates regarding how that will affect the budget moving forward?
At this point, the negotiations are still pretty much at the beginning, so we really haven't gotten to solid economic terms at this point. And we do know what the pattern has been in the city, and we do know what has been sort of just around the region, but at this point, it's still too early to say whether or not.
Taking a look at the five-year change in expenses, expenses have increased by $320 million. I will point out that $56 million of that is pandemic-related, so one-time. And then overall, that's an increase of eleven percent. And then PS expenses are up by about eight percent over that period, and OTPS is up fourteen percent. If you take out the pandemic expenses, the increase in OTPS is only four percent, which is less than inflation over the same period, so colleges are working to break down those costs. Changes in full-time staffing over one year, I just mentioned that, fifty-nine positions. It's just a point-three percent increase. And at the senior colleges, the increase is in eight positions or one percent. And, you know, you can see from the line items there what that looks like across the groupings of colleges. Community colleges are down by eighty-five positions or two percent. If you recall, the community colleges were losing enrollment. If you recall, the community colleges were losing enrollment prior to the pandemic. And so we're already working to look at costs and make adjustments. This is the two-year change. We reviewed this at the June meeting. So overall, full-time positions down by 605 or 3%. And taking, again, the five-year look, full-time staffing has decreased by 7% or 1,300 positions since 2019. And just tying back to the shares that personal service is of our total expenses, it is the largest percentage. So when you're looking at having to reduce costs, you want to reduce your recurring costs. So that is everything on fiscal '23. So our year did just close. We don't, we'll, you know, run the final numbers. We don't anticipate any significant changes, but we will, you know, come back with the final report at the November meeting.
And before we get on to 2024, I just have one question. The reduction in tuition income, is that entirely due to enrollment drop, or is there a drop in actual collection of outstanding tuition?
So both. So there has been a drop in collection rates, and we have been talking to the colleges and working with the colleges on that. And we know that colleges are putting strategies in place to improve those collection rates, to get back to, you know, the activities and status that they had prior to the pandemic.
Any questions on the 2023 financial report before we go to 2024? Okay, Director?
Okay. So the fiscal '24 city adopted budget, so I'll just highlight some of the changes that we saw. So there was a restoration of $5.9 million from the PEGs. And there was additional ASAP funding of $5 million. That was also meant to offset cuts that, you know, the university and the colleges had to take because of the PEGs. The city adopted budget provided $10.5 million for the ACE program, the Accelerate, Complete, and Engage program. It's, again, one year of funding, so that is an ongoing program that, for the third year, has received one year of funding. So continues to be an issue and a challenge going forward. And then the next bullet point, you know, highlights several programs that also received funding restorations. The typical process for this is that these do get one year of funding every year, and the funding is added in the adopted budget, so VLO scholarships, research institutes, and so forth. Those programs were all funded again in fiscal '24. And then this last item, as I'm sure you've all, you know, read and heard, the mayor announced that there will be additional PEGs, starting in the November plan, PEGs of 5% for all city agencies. For CUNY, that number is $23 million. And that is also a baseline PEG, so it's recurring, and it is baseline at $20 million in the out-years. And, you know, then there's also potential additional PEGs of 5% each in the January plan and the executive budget. So new PEGs could potentially total upwards of $60 million this year.
On the first line, the restoration of $5.9 million. If my recollection is correct, that going back to 2020, we had a reduction of about $67 million in city funding?
So the PEGs, the PEG prior to the restoration was $55.5 million. Those PEGs all happened under the current administration. And with the restoration of the $5.9, the $5 million of ASAP, our cuts are down to $44 million in the current year. But yes, then if you add the $23 million, you're back up to that $67, $68 million level.
Yes.
Thanks. I have a question on the CUNY Diversity Incubator. So I've been a member of the incubator in the past, and I guess now, my understanding was that that program is not going to continue. And so I'd just like to understand if it is continuing, is it continuing under SERU, which is where it was housed initially a couple of years ago, and it's been housed? So, okay, but it is going to be called the CUNY Diversity Incubator? So I just want to know a little bit more information, because that was not clear.
I don't know if they kept the same name for the city council budgeting process, but the work that was done prior with SERU, the Center for Ethnic, Religious, and Regional Understanding at Queens College, for people not familiar with the lingo. We, you know, we had its run and drew some positive outcomes. But we felt that we needed sort of a different kind of a strategy, and we're going now with more of a model similar to what we used with the stimulus, with the strategic funds from the governor last year to do a competition on the colleges and distribute the funding for them more directly than in the way that it was done in the incubator model with SERU.
Okay, so just to understand that $0.5 million that is, or $500,000, right, or something like that is included here, that will be through a competition process that has not been allowed yet?
Yes.
Okay. And this is particularly for, like, diversity-related, DEI-related things? Okay.
Anti-hate, and, yes.
That's what I was wondering. Okay, but it's going to be happening this fiscal?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you for that.
Thanks for your question.
Professor Frasani.
Did you give a break up by senior college graduate program or community colleges on the structural deficit? And now I see the community colleges have another $20 million added to whatever their structural deficit is. Is there a wide variance between those three groupings on the structural deficit? And if so, are the community colleges looking at a major infillable deficit for the year?
Professor Frasani, at our November meeting, which I remind, or which I tell everybody, is going to be a long meeting. We are going to have a lengthy examination of the structural deficit, the financial situation of the system and of the colleges. As you can see from the reports, we are in some very serious financial shape. We're going to need to take action. We're going to require accountability on everybody's part to get things done, to get us where we need to be. But that's going to be a long discussion at the November meeting. If you have.
I have another question, but.
Please, no.
It's my understanding, and I think it might be naive, are there no residual federal funds available for this fiscal year? They all had to be spent, or is there some other way that some was?
There will be some carried over, and we did get an extension as well to do the next fiscal year.
Some schools have residual funds, not all.
Yeah.
Like CSI, for example.
Further?
So on the capital budget, so there were some items in the capital budget, or in the adopted budget, rather, for capital. The city council added $18.7 million. Most of that was for senior college projects. And the borough presidents added $11.2 million, $4.6 for seniors, and $6.6 million for the community colleges.
Any further questions? Thank you, Director. So as I was saying, for the next meeting, fasten your seat belts. You know, it's a start of a process, and we're going to start the examination. And as I said, the key word is going to be accountability. Information item 2B is the Fiscal Matters Information Report. Interim Vice Chancellor and Chief Financial Officer Christina Chiappa is available to provide further information as needed. Do you have a presentation, or is this just the stuff in our materials?
Just the report. May I if you have any questions?
Any questions or? Okay, with no more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second? Is there any opposition? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.